Good evening, everybody, and welcome. We're going to call this regular session to order. This is our 39th regular session. I want to invite Rabbi Ari Plost to come to the podium to deliver our invocation, if you want to rise as you are able. And after his invocation, we'll do the pledge to the flag.
We bow our heads in a moment of prayer. God of justice, never loving kindness, thank you for the gift of life and for endowing each and every person in our city as unique, created in your holy image. On this occasion at our year, as we remember the victims of the Holocaust who suffered the extreme depth of evil of human history, we thank you, O Lord, for life itself. Help our elected officials to create and support the systems where we may hear the weak and the vulnerable of our city, whose voices may not always be easily heard. As Eli Wiesel has offered, "The opposite of love is not hate, it is indifference." Help us, O Lord, help us to continue to face our challenges with the courage of conviction and determination, rather than to ignore them with apathy. God, may this assembly see the diversity of experience, the diversity of background, of color, of sexual orientation, of gender, and of history and of culture, and yes, the difference of religious affiliation and practice. Let us see such a tapestry as the very strength of the creative force of our city. God, let us overcome our indifference as we lift up our given differences from God as virtues in one another. And together we offer, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Standard announcements, the rules of procedure we'll be operating under were adopted on September 24th, 2013. Use of cellphones during meetings is restricted. All correspondence for distribution to elected officials should be provided to the city clerk and should include a copy for the city clerk for inclusion in the official record. Our meeting schedule for May is listed on the agenda. Tuesday, May 6th, we'll have a work session at 4:00. Tuesday, May 13th, we have a work session at 4:00. And we have our budget hearing scheduled for 7:00 PM that evening. Tuesday, May 20th, we'll have a work session at 4:00. And then on Tuesday, May 27th, our regular session at 7:00 PM. And with that, I would like to invite the rabbi to come up. And I have a proclamation to offer. And I want to say first that I'm very grateful for the rabbi's hospitality. He had me, council member Metzner, and some other folks over for a traditional dinner and I-
Sabbath.
Sabbath, the Shabbat dinner.
Shabbat.
The Shabbat dinner, and it was very nice. And then I attended the service at the Beni Abraham Temple on Friday night to also proclaim Holocaust Remembrance Day and the Days of Remembrance. So, this is a proclamation for Holocaust Remembrance Day, April 28th, 2014, and the Days of Remembrance from April 27th through May 4th. Whereas the Holocaust was a systematic, state-sponsored bureaucratic persecution and murder of approximately 6 million Jews by the Nazi regime and its collaborators between 1933 and 1945. Whereas the state of Maryland and communities across our nation became the homeland to Holocaust survivors who, having deep appreciation of freedom and opportunity, greatly contributed to the culture and strength of their adopted land. And whereas the United States Congress established the Days of Remembrance as our nation's annual commemoration of the Holocaust and created a United States Holocaust Memorial Museum as a permanent living memorial to the victims. And whereas the theme for the 2014 observance is confronting the Holocaust, American responses. This year, we commemorate the anniversaries of two seminal events in Holocaust history: the refugee crisis in the spring of 1939 and the deportation of Hungarian Jews five years later. American responses to the persecution and murder of European Jews invites reflection on the role of individuals, organizations, and governments in confronting hatred and mass atrocities. And whereas in an effort to overcome intolerance and indifference through education and remembrance, the city of Hagerstown, Maryland joins our nation and communities across the globe in a day of remembrance and commemoration of the Holocaust to prevent tragedies like this from happening again, and in honor of its victims, survivors, and liberators. And now therefore be it resolved that with the support of the city council, I, David Geisberts, the mayor of the city of Hagerstown, do hereby encourage all citizens to observe Holocaust Remembrance Day on Monday, April 28th, 2014, and the Days of Remembrance between April 27th and May 4th, 2014, in memory of the victims of the Holocaust and in honor of the survivors, as well as the rescuers and liberators, and further encourage all citizens in Hagerstown to promote human dignity and respect for all people. So Rabbi, thank you so much for being here tonight and accepting this, and would ask if you want to say a few words.
Just a moment. You know, I think we all, as Americans, treasure the tapestry of diversity and backgrounds and experiences that we all come from. And we, as the Jewish community represented of the victims of the Holocaust here in Hagerstown, feel very much blessed to be part of a community that is so open and tolerant and respectful. And to whatever extent that we see each other as creatures of God, as invested in our own faith journeys, as individuals and as community, we strengthen not only ourselves, but we also strengthen one another. And I think we all, when we look at the downtown landscape and see just the overwhelming amount of offerings that our faith community can provide, and to see the faith community as a partner to the city, to our civic leadership, to the business community, in fostering new opportunities and new challenges so that we see better days ahead and that our future is strengthened by recognizing that we are weak, we are all creatures of God, we all have weaknesses, and that when we serve God as humble servants, as we all blessed to do as an assembly, we treasure that very core nature, which is why we are all here to begin with. So, thank you very much on behalf not only of the Jewish community, but also the entire faith-based community of Hagerstown.
Thank you. Thank you, Rabbi.
Want a photo?
Yeah, let's do a... We love photo ops here, especially Aaron.
All right, one, three. One, two, three. One more, one, two.
Thanks.
I have one of those high-tech gizmos myself.
Yeah, right? It's good. Everybody should have one. Okay. I would, at this time, like to give some special recognition to Detective Nick Varner. Nick was our top cop. This was a vote of... He was nominated, I think, by his colleagues in the Hagerstown Police Department. He was given this award as the Maryland Municipal League. Is that right, chief?
Yes.
So, the Maryland Municipal League Police-
Executive Association.
-Executive Association made this call. Come over here, detective. And I just want to say... Oh, is this a...
Retired Chief of Police.
Dan Varner. Yes, retired chief of police. I was reading that in your... In the bio. So, I'm just excited. First of all, I played basketball, but I couldn't say I played basketball because he did most of the playing. But this guy is a tough competitor. So, I'm glad that we have this guy on our team. What he's doing with the Police Athletic League alone, I think, makes him worthy of this honor, trying to take at-risk youth and give them some constructive risk to help make themselves better people and better citizens. So, we're very grateful for your service and your example that you're setting for your colleagues in the Hagerstown Police Department. And I'm glad to see so many of your colleagues here in support of you, but also for the example that you set for the children in the community. So, I'm going to turn it over to the chief, see if you have anything to say.
Told Nick I'd try to put him on the spot here. But when the nomination came around for the Police Executive Association a few months ago, Nick's name came to mind when we were reading through the criteria. And a lot of times when you think about a top cop association, you think about one traumatic event, like something you'd see in the movies, he saved the day. Well, Nick didn't save the day, but he saved a lot of days. And he didn't do it alone. He would say that he's with his detectives that are here with him. Can I get the detectives from the Hagerstown Police Department to stand up for just a second, and supervisors? Sorry, Tammy. Jesse. They're here. He would say he didn't do it alone. Nick works every day with these detectives, hand in hand, and the officers that are in the room here with him, and follow-up serious investigations. He worked a couple homicides and some serious assault cases. They put in many, many hours. And Nick's known for one of those detectives that can get right inside the interview room, get inside the box, and go for the confession. In addition to that, Nick's supported by his friends here from the Police Athletic League. I saw Brian Burke here. And Brian's up to you if you want to stand. But he doesn't do that job alone either, but through the Police Athletic League, they were able to start an after-school program just a few months ago. And they're just really carrying on the traditions of the Police Athletic League here in our community. That's a big part of that. Nick is just committed to the department, to those that he works with. He is really thought of highly in the department and committed to his family, committed to the community. And all three or four of those major criterias is what went into this. And if you read the application, that's what made him a standout. And he was selected as the 2013 top cop for the Police Executive Association. And he's joined here with his dad. Dad is retired?
Yes, sir.
Retired chief of police from Huntington Police Department up in Pennsylvania. So, it's kind of a unique opportunity for him to be up here with his dad.
And you'll be in Ocean City June 10th, right?
That's correct.
So, I'll be there too. Hopefully, I'll get to be invited to come see you, be honored. That would be nice. Dad, do you want to say a few words about your son?
I don't know if I can.
Please, please do.
I get choked up.
Oh, okay. I think that just shows how much he loves you. Do you want to say a few words, detective?
Sure. I never miss an opportunity to talk.
Might have a future in politics.
Yeah. I just want to say thank you to the chief, to my sergeant, my lieutenant, the people I work with, the people at the Police Athletic League, the people from Lifehouse Church. They all wrote really nice things about me, really warmed my heart to see what they thought of me. This is truly an honor for me. I will represent the city of Hagerstown, the Hagerstown Police Department, well in receiving this award. So, I just want to say thank you to the city of Hagerstown, to my police department, to my chief. But I couldn't do any of this without the love and support of my wife and my family. That's really the foundation of what my life is built on, so.
Great. And I think a few council members might want to say something too. I know Mr. Munson does.
Nick, this is a great picture, great article.
Thank you.
It's not often that a police officer gets his picture on the front page of the newspaper, especially for all the right reasons.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for being a cop. Thank you for being a cop in Hagerstown, Maryland. You make us proud. But more than that, you put a face on government that we can't do, but you've done it. You've made government more important to a whole group of clients, your clients out there, kids you work with, other people you work with, and made it government a better activity for people to be involved with. We thank you for your work, and we're very appreciative of it, one of the reasons you're here tonight, and thank you for being here tonight. And we just ask that you keep up the good work and don't retire anywhere near soon.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else?
I'd just like to thank you, Nick. And I'll just briefly say, and I come from a slightly different perspective, because I can thank you not only as a council member, but having been a criminal defense lawyer for 36 years, there is nothing more important in our system than honesty and integrity. And on top of all the other things that you have shown, those have been standout features, and it is appreciated.
Thank you, sir.
I talk to Nick a lot.
I'm sure you do.
So, I know what he's capable of, as well as Brian back here with the Police Athletic Club, so, good job.
Mr. Brubaker?
It's great when one of Hagerstown's finest is recognized as the finest.
Absolutely. Any number of years, we go down as elected officials to Ocean City for learning. It is very good to see that you're going down there for an award and know that you've already learned a lot of those things that we go down for.
Thanks.
Excellent. So, everybody, give him a round of applause. Do you guys want to join us in the photo?
No, no. You probably have 500 of these, just in case.
It was worth it just to see you get dressed up, Nick.
You stand in the middle. Yeah.
Pat, Bob, you guys want to come?
Hi, nice to meet you. Welcome.
Congrats. Good luck.
Hey, thank you. Thanks for being here. That brings us to citizen comments. I would like to remind folks that citizen comments are limited to five minutes per individual. Meetings are televised and recorded, so your comments will be on air, on tape, and on YouTube. We have five folks to sign up, or two folks are signed up to speak at the same time. Tara and Dave are coming up at the same time? Is that it? You're the first on the list? Come on up. I do have a handy timer here so that I can be fair to everybody, so I'm going to start that and then... Take it away.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, staff, thank you very much for this opportunity. My name is David Hanlon. I work for the Washington County Free Library. Joining me is Tara Sargent, Executive Director of Leadership Washington County. We are members of the Rotary Literacy Initiative, and I have the pleasure of chairing that group. We began about two and a half years ago out of the Rotary Club of Hagerstown. We became aware of some troubling statistics in our community. We created a task force. It was tempting to try and resolve some of these issues, at least to highlight them, with the purpose of being to increase the number of children starting school ready to learn and to reduce the number of children who experience summer learning loss. Ultimately, the consequences of all this is to have as many children as possible reading on grade level by grade four. And Rotary is concerned about this topic, because statistics show that children not reading at grade level by grade four are unlikely to ever read at grade level. Statistics show that children starting school not ready to learn in kindergarten are unlikely to ever be able to catch up. So, children that start kindergarten not ready to learn are behind the eight ball. Pardon the euphemism. People who are not able to function at grade level at this point are more prone for problems of substance abuse, domestic violence, criminal behavior, and chronic unemployment. This problem is costing our community tremendously. And the best poverty program we have is a literacy program. But Washington County is not doing well. Washington County rates last in Maryland in terms of children starting kindergarten ready to learn. And while the pattern is not unique to Hagerstown, it is concentrated in Hagerstown. The Rotary Initiative is trying to increase awareness and by building collaborative arrangements between organizations not for profits to develop solutions. We have yet to ask for government funding. In the last two years, we have organized summits on early childhood literacy as part of this effort to elevate this issue. And this Friday, we'll be holding the third Such Summit, and Dr. Tara Sargent has organized this and will tell you more.
Good evening. It's been a pleasure of mine and a real opportunity to be associated with the Literacy Task Force. And I have a really strong committee that's worked with me to plan the summit this year. We've organized these summits to be a conversational and collaborative way for the community to come together and learn more about issues related to literacy. And this year, we're very proud of the agenda that we have to offer. Extend the invitation to you if you haven't already received that information. But we're featuring two keynote presentations, the first of which is by Professor Emerita from Chippensburg University's Early Childhood Program, talking about brain development. A lot of people don't realize that young children's brains develop about 80 to 90% by the time they're four years old. It's pretty staggering to consider that. So, that session will be all about brain development of the young child. The second session that's open for the entire group will be about Common Core. If you pick up the newspaper or read anything in the popular press, everybody's talking about Common Core. We'll have some folks from the Maryland State Department of Education to talk about pre-K standards for English and language and arts, as well as K-5 standards for English and language arts. And then we have a couple of... We have six different breakout sessions. We'll have a session to talk more about the Common Core, so the folks that didn't get their questions answered and would like a little bit more of an informal dialogue will be able to talk to the two folks from MSD, along with two people from Washington County Public Schools focusing on Common Core here locally. We'll also have a session about the economics of early literacy, which means what happens if we don't invest in early childhood education? We'll hear a perspective from the correctional system, from the business community, from the local Department of Social Services as well. Our third session will be about technology and assessment in pre-K. Assessment, as you probably well know, spans the whole curriculum, and pre-K is no exception, especially as Maryland is sort of leading the edge in regards to pre-K. And if you have children and grandchildren, you'll know that they're using the iPads just as much as you are. So, they'll demonstrate some apps on the iPad that they're using at the pre-K level. I'll also have a session on parent engagement, something that we found to be a struggle within the task force that our community's particularly taken a lookout. Head Start will be represented on that panel. We have a local pediatrician, Dr. Booty, who will talk about a program called Reach Out and Read. We'll hear from Kathy Powderly at the Hagerstown Area Religious Council and what the faith community is doing in regards to literacy in Washington County. And we'll also hear about a program that the library spearheads called Every Child Ready to Read. A fifth session will look at the Early Childhood Advisory Council. If you don't know much about that, they're going to kind of explain what their mission is and how they're trying to get the community engaged in their efforts. And finally, we have a whole session devoted to summer learning loss. And we're really excited to host Dr. Carl Alexander, who's the Chair of the Sociology Department at Johns Hopkins, who will lead that session for us. It's open to the entire community. It's free. It's from 8 until 2, and it is this Friday at Hagerstown Community College. I invite all of you to attend.
We do... Would love to have you register and attend if you haven't already. We just have a head count for food, but as I said, Rotary is committed to this. And with the assistance of manpower, staffing solutions, this is free and open to the public. We hope you'll join us. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for the work you're doing on that front. Very important. Thank you. Next on the list is Dwight Lewis, my classmate.
Actually, we were going to come up together.
Oh, okay. Who do you have, Luke, or...
It's all four of us.
Okay. And I think I know what this is about.
I'm sure you do.
Because I saw your Facebook post. And I have some answers for you, too.
Mr. Mayor, council members, obviously, you already know, we're here to inquire as to whether or not our representatives plan to request a cable channel, free access for the residents of the area. We're aware that there's going to be a restructuring of the negotiation between the government and Antietam Cable pretty soon here. We're also aware that the government and the educational system have had their respective channels for the past 12 years or so, and that's where we're standing. That's our question. Anything you wanted to add?
I don't have any particular points to elaborate on that he hasn't touched in the general statement just now, but this is something that was to be incorporated some time ago when those channel designations were set for government and for the public education. There are a lot of volunteer activities going on in the community right now. There are a lot of different groups who have a vested interest in enhancing the quality of life in the community and enhancing the level of public responsibility in Hagerstown and the surrounding area. And we believe that this channel could be a very, very powerful outlet for being able to organize community outreach activities. We have a large humanitarian interest in seeing that move forward and seeing that become an option that's open to the public. And we're very curious to hear the steps that are being taken to ensure that the public has that avenue available to them.
Well, I do know several months ago, I met with another concerned citizen who was interested in the same thing. You might know Brother Andy. And he also is interested in that public access channel. The negotiations are just about completed with Antietam Cable, and as far as I understand, there will be three channels, one for the city of Hagerstown's government channel, one, I believe, for the Board of Education, which we negotiate for them as part of this package. The other, the third channel, will be for the public access channel. With the PEG fees, the public education government funds, I believe, upgrades are being looked at for equipment. So, because with new technology, all of that has changed. So, I do know that staff is working hard toward that end, and I would encourage you to be in touch with Karen Giffen. She's our community affairs manager, and she is on the negotiation team, I believe along with our attorney here, Mr. Nairn, working with Antietam Cable. So, if I said anything incorrectly, please correct me, but I believe that that's the track that we're on, is to get that channel up and running, and that is something I would like to see, more public participation in that public access channel. So, I appreciate you bringing the issue forward, and I believe that we're slated to have something by the end of May. Is that right? Or we extended the franchise through another three months?
Right. But we're looking at final drafts of the new agreement right now. We've reviewed it on our end, and it's in the hands of Antietam Cable. We're waiting to hear back from them, so we're close.
Good. And I think this public testimony is just, you know, helps bolster our case for the request of that channel. I'm sure it's something Antietam Cable would rather not provide us, but I do think our team is working hard to get that included in the new agreement.
Very good.
So, stay tuned. Appreciate the insight.
Actually, I did have one more question.
Sure.
It just came to mind, just coming here today. Is the prayer, is that a regular part of the weekly meeting here?
Every regular session, we have an invocation.
Okay. I got to tell you, I mean, honestly, as an atheist, I felt a little bit uncomfortable through the whole thing. I'm not sure what the implications are as far as church and state go with that sort of thing, but like I said, as an atheist, I was really uncomfortable through that entire thing, but...
I'm sorry you felt that way.
Just thought I'd throw that out there.
Appreciate your feedback.
Anything else?
I have nothing, Dad.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
And Jamie Rowland. Hi, Jamie.
Hi, how are you?
Good, thanks.
Good. I will try to keep it brief, but I do have some things I'd like to give to the clerk, so I'm just going to get my copies here. And there's seven copies of each. I have to tell you that since last week when I was here, I've done a lot of reading about what's going on in this town. Probably more than I ever thought I would. Just probably it's been a good thing, because the positive that comes out of this sort of thing gives that, you know, that you sort of get to see what you're dealing with. And I just kind of wanted to take a few minutes, if I may, because I know that this evening you guys are scheduled to vote on that moratorium.
Actually, we're not.
Oh.
I have removed that from the agenda because the council is not prepared to vote on that at this time.
Oh, okay. Well, that's okay, because what I...
Yeah.
What she's handing out is, I think, helpful anyway, because I've, you know, I've read the entire 83-page Hagerstown strategic plan, I guess is the best...
Comprehensive plan?
Yes.
Comprehensive plan?
Yes, from December. I've printed out the Sustainable Community Action Plan, and I've printed out the Economic Development Strategy. And I, I think that probably one of the things I would just like to say is that one of the reasons why I chose to work in this town that I, I was born and raised in, and why this is particularly of interest to me, is because I grew up in what, what I think most people now would consider to be the bad end of town. I grew up in the west end of town. I went to Western Heights, which I know is not necessarily the most desirable school in city limits in terms of middle schools. And I think for me, you know, and Dave, you and I knew each other in high school, I had the, I was blessed at that point in time that the way that the districting went, my, my parents' home allowed me to go to North, North Hagerstown, whereas now I would be going to South Hagerstown. And I realized that we have a lot of award-winning schools in this area. I think both of those schools are very equipped today. One of the things for me, as, as I tried to mention last week, but I know that tensions were a little high for everybody last week, I think that, for me, the reason why I do the work that I do every day, that I come to work downtown and I see all the same things that you folks see, which is kind of a dingy downtown, the reason I do the work that I do is because the change does not happen by itself. And I feel like if I, if I connect with forty-five people a week, and if I say one thing that connects to one out of ten people a day, that's one potential change that wasn't there before the conversation was had. I would like to say that, I, I'm sure this is not breaching any confidentiality, but I have used last week's communication with a number of my clients that may frequent my, my agency's office, as well as Soul Haven, and I more or less shared with that, those clients, the implications of their behavior and what it has led to, because it is understandably a legitimate concern. I do think that, you know, I don't think any of us like to see people acting crazy, you know, in the middle of the street or on the sidewalk or whatever. And I think there's a lot of lack of awareness. So the, the two articles that I gave you, and frankly, I probably have five more that I could give you, but I thought that those were the most complete. If you're, many of you are probably familiar with Jane Jacobs. She's long gone, but she was, she was not a community planner. She was not a educated woman in specifically in economics or anything like that, but she knew people, and she knew communities, and she knew how to get out and get to know the people in her community to strengthen it from the ground up. And, and she has, since nineteen sixty, been on the map in terms of how to create prosperous communities like we're trying to do here. And I think that, I would like to say that I have just spoken with my, my, our business manager today, and I said to him again, and I mentioned this at the end, but I didn't write you a letter last week, is that, you know, we, we do appreciate that there does need to be a more significant police presence downtown. We agree with that. I think, you know, I've been trying to keep the, the owners of the business abreast of the footprint that you guys are trying to get of city police downtown and the incentives that are in place to do that. One of the, one of the things that he had agreed would be mutually beneficial to the city, to us, to our population, to you guys, would be, you know, once we get that building completed, that second floor is going to be more or less a, for now, more or less a suite for staff and for training, but certainly, we would love to be able to partner and have a partnership with the city police so that if they need to stop in, because I know they have kind of a telephone booth type thing going on on the corner, so that they feel like there's a welcome mat that they can come out, you know. And as I said, the articles I gave you, they're, they're not very long, but they're very good reading, and they talk a lot about how, one of the articles specifically talks about how New York City went from the most dangerous city in the world to one of the safest, and what they did specifically to do that. And, and that's really on the cusp of, I do believe there are some legitimate concerns in the memo that accompanied the, the recommendation for the moratorium. And I, and I also heard that, that gentleman last week, that was the last one that spoke, and what he's seen crumble before his eyes in his own community. And I think we've all seen that or experienced that in our own way. Whatever that, whatever that is, is different for everyone, but anyway, I think that there's a better way, and ultimately, I feel like I can tell you that I'm going to be much more aware as a citizen. And I, I hate that something like this is what brought it, but I'm glad it happened nonetheless, because I feel like that's part of the problem, is that torch hasn't been passed from the baby boomers to our generation, where, you know, I think everyone's looking for an answer, and we're all saying, well, what's going on? But no one's really doing what they need to do, and we're all just waiting for the next guy to fix it, and it's not going to fix itself. We have to knock on doors and get to know each other and figure out what's important to these folks that live in front of the Maryland Theater. And maybe they like the arts, too, you know? Who do, you know? But I feel like there's a lot better ways we can do it than, than what's been happening. You know, I even, I even kind of, not joked, but kind of joked that maybe we need to just start with a basic, like, you know, dress code for the city, that you can't wear pajama pants after ten a.m., you know? I don't know. Maybe we have like an outdoor...
Just as many people lining up against that.
You're right, you're right, and you're right. But I guess, you see, but I think what I'm saying is, is that I think that what's happened is, over time, people have come to accept not holding expectations. And the truth is, is there's absolutely nothing wrong with expectations. They just need to be very clear, and everyone needs to know what they are, and there needs to be accountability, and it needs to be consistent. And I think that that's ultimately, I think, if we can get those things going, you know, in addition to some of the other things, like I said, that are in, in those packets, I think you guys will be heading the whole city in a better direction. Thank you.
Thanks, Jamie. And just to clarify, we did pull it from the agenda, but I'm encouraging staff, we, the council is encouraging staff to continue to look at ways to address, within the Land Management Code, to achieve the goals that we would like to achieve for downtown. And I do believe that staff will be reaching out to Change Health to find a way to work with that organization to make sure that we can achieve that goal.
Yeah, I'm, I'm all, I'm all for that. Like I said, and one of the articles, I think, is very good at describing how, one of the things that I think is important is that, I think that the message that I got is just a reader of the initial memo that was sent out for the recommendation to introduce the moratorium. I think it gives a sense that people with these issues are the problem. And I think it's really important that, that, you know, A, we obviously serve people that don't just have mental health diagnosis, but we have people that are disabled because of physical diagnosis and happen to be depressed because of a physical diagnosis, or anxious, or whatever. So I think it's very, it's very important to do that, to, to make sure you're, you're hitting on those chords. Having said that, I think that, I think that, I, I surely wish, you know, I'm not on the council, and I probably never will be, but I would never have spent seventy-plus thousand dollars to have an outside group of people come in to talk to your community. I think the best way to find out what your community wants, get to know your community, get to know your people. Come to my office, go to Soul Haven, everybody. Have like a receiving line, have like Farmer's Market Day, have a community day. When I was a kid, they had Hagerfest...
I don't think the issue is us knowing the community. I think we're paying, in that case, for the expertise of these people in analyzing market conditions...
Right.
So that we can have recommendations to implement that will actually have an effect on, on the change we want to see.
I get what you're saying. Like I said, I, I'm just going, I'm just, you know, pulling pieces again from different bits and pieces of what I've seen. But as I said, I think, I think that there's a way for this community to thrive without the megaplex, you know, scenario, or bringing a new team to Hagerstown. I think that we have wonderful, innovative folks that we might not necessarily look at at first glance and think, this person's wonderful and innovative and all these sorts of things. And I guess what I'm saying is, I'd really love to have like neighborhood, you know, neighborhood forums or something, where maybe there's, maybe there's representative from each neighborhood. And I know that there are all kinds of different urban units that are in place now, but anyway, I'm rambling. I'm gonna go, and so you guys can get to your meeting, but I appreciate you hearing me. I have lots of ideas. I would be more than happy at any point in time, not just as somebody that works for Change Health, but as somebody that's lived here and has watched the same crumbling that you folks have.
We'll have to do lunch sometime.
That would be wonderful.
All right.
No, no hard feelings. Everyone, thanks again. Appreciate it.
All right, that brings us to city administrators' comments.
Two quick comments from me this evening. One, just to offer my congratulations and appreciation to Detective Nick Barner. We're fortunate to have Nick, and we're fortunate to have a lot of good employees for the city of Hagerstown. The second is to thank the mayor and council. We've worked on the budget through the month of April, obviously not an easy thing, and appreciate your work and time devoted to the budget. That's it for me.
All right, that'll bring us to council comments. I'll start with Ms. Nye, and I'll work my way over.
I just have one comment tonight, and that is, isn't it wonderful to have freedom of speech? I'm so glad that people can come in here and they can say exactly what they want to say. And I guess, as a politician that I really am not, I wish that I also was afforded that opportunity many times. That's it.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to congratulate Brian Poffenberger. Brian Poffenberger has been head of the Washington County Chamber of Commerce for about a decade now, and I've been fortunate enough to know him since he was a kid. He lived in my neighborhood years ago. And he's done a great job on behalf of Washington County and the business community. He was recently named the new Director of the Maryland Chamber of Commerce, meaning his activities will change to Annapolis primarily, but I'm certain that he will continue to do his outstanding job on behalf of business and on behalf of the state of Maryland, as he assumes these new responsibilities.
Thanks, Tom. Mr. Metzner?
I just, again, like to congratulate Nick, and I'd like to thank the rabbi for this evening. And I'm always impressed that somebody can find a way to argue about a prayer of total inclusion, but there's always, I guess, a way to do that.
I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, that's all.
Mr. Brubaker?
Well, I want to thank the students at Vester Elementary in St. Mary's for helping plant trees at the parking lot, the new parking lot near the dog park, and participating in Arbor Day ceremonies, and also the students from North High who delivered an Arbor Day address.
Great. Mr. Alshar?
Couple of things. The first is, I believe, the, I believe that the film festival is this week, Thursday night, and I know that folks look forward to that event. I think that's one of those many events that we talk about having more of downtown, so I want to thank staff and the folks involved in that and putting it on. And I will look forward to it. The second is also, again, to congratulate Nick. You know, we talked a little bit about, you know, his, his accolades as an employee of the police force, you know, and the reality is, you know, any adult can learn or be taught an employable skill, but I don't think that every adult can be taught to give of their free time to better the lives of children. It just is something that, that, you know, is fortunately unique to a great majority of us, and he happens to be an exemplary one of that. And so, again, congratulations to him.
Mayor, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention one other thing. On Monday, the Labor Council in Washington County met to commemorate the injuries and deaths of, of workers. And it was a great meeting. There were a number of speakers, including sheriff of Washington County, and a number of others who gave great speeches on behalf of safety in the workplace. And Penny was there, and I was there, and it was a very worthwhile effort. They do this every year, and it's, it's great to participate in it.
Thank you.
Especially since I represented you, mayor.
And thank you so much. I appreciate all of the, the representation that council members do for me when I'm unable to make a certain event. I understand that we have someone else that would like to, to make some comments, so if you don't mind, come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Honorable Councilman. My name is J.J. Jelenka. I'm the Deputy CEO and Head of Operation of Change Systems, Inc. And I believe, I want to use this opportunity to address the council. Our goal is to work with the city of Hagerstown. We are here to provide best-in-class services to the clients in the city of Hagerstown, who came in from Baltimore due to the need in, in the city of Hagerstown. We've been here since 2009, and I believe we are providing value in the city of Hagerstown. We bought the property across Seven North Potomac Street, and we are willing to invest a lot of money to help build city of Hagerstown. As Jamie said, Jamie's one of my, he's one of my colleagues, he's one of my staff. As she said, you know, prior to this moratorium, we've been looking at options, you know, me and the CEO, we spoke about it, and said, what does Hagerstown need? And Jamie said, one of the issues that Hagerstown is facing is the issue with the police, that J.J., it might be good if you guys can help our police in downtowns. And, you know, I'll tell you sincerely, prior to this, we are willing to open one of our apartments for free to the police to use, free on, on our, our own cost. We'll refurbish it, give it to the police to use for free, as part of the way to help the city of Hagerstown. And that was the reason Jamie was trying to talk to you, because Jamie said, I know the mayor, I went to, to the same high school with the mayor, and I want to help. And I said, okay, we're willing to do that for the city of Hagerstown, for free. Again, we're willing to come to the table to support the city, to support the vision of the city. What we are asking for is simple. Give us the chance to do the right thing, to serve this community. We are not the one bringing in drugs. We're helping to fix this community. And the second thing I want to ask and address to, to the mayor is this. Since the moratorium has been, you know, it's, it's been reviewed, I believe, the second thought, there's no vote on it today. I just want to make it clear. I hope the city, they're going to approve my license, because they are delaying my license, and I'm looking at the date, my lawyers are looking at that. They're technically, they're delaying my license because they want to push this through. I've given them everything. I've paid for my permit, for demolition permit, and for my building permit, and I've met all the requirements, including, we met the incentive requirements. But one person or the other decide not to give us incentive. We have our rights. We are working with the best lawyers, and we're willing to work with the city of Hagerstown. So I just want to make this clear. I hope, we are, we are not dumb, we're smart guys. I hope they're going to approve my, my permits. They're not going to delay me because I'm looking at a lot of things. I've emailed Stephen Bachmiller, I've emailed John Lestition, I've emailed people in the city of Hagerstown, and I know it's clear, they, they are playing delay tactics, and I understand that. I went to Harvard, I went to NYU, I got my MBA from NYU Stern School of Business, one of the best business schools in the university, in, in the U.S. I went to University of Maryland. So we know what we're doing. We want to help the city, and we want to be treated fairly. Want to be treated fairly. Let us work with Hagerstown and help Hagerstown. We have the resources, we want to support you guys. Give us a chance. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So I would just like to comment that, this is just in general, since it's my turn to comment, I let the council go and do their comments. So I was personally offended by the testimony last week that suggested that, as a counselor myself, when I'm not the mayor, that I would somehow not want people with mental health issues to access the care they need. To me, that's offensive because of the work that I do. This is and always has been a land use issue. The fact that you bought a property that has thousands of retail square feet on the first floor that were retail residences, albeit unoccupied for forty years, changing the use of that building is a land use issue that I think is of concern to me and obviously to staff. So if that's the primary motivation for the action that we were considering. As far as the permits, I believe that because we're not moving forward with any kind of moratorium, the permits should move along as they would with any permitted use in this primary, in the zoning district. As far as the incentives, I would disagree that what you're trying to do is in line with the vision that we have set out. That is part of the criteria for receiving those incentives. Because of the changing of the use of that, that property, I think that's a primary concern. So, so that's just...
So that's just my initial reaction to your statement and to the testimony from last week. Other than that, I'm not going to say anything further. I do want to mention some events that are coming up that I hope everybody would be interested in attending. The Maryland International Film Festival starts this Thursday. There's a reception and a showing of the first movie at the Maryland Theater on May 1st. Goes through this Saturday, May 3rd. Also on May 3rd, I have to check my calendar because there's so much stuff going on, there will be a hubbub for, to support the Youth United Way this Saturday at the library here in downtown. So I would encourage folks to come out. That's at 10 o'clock at the library. Starting at 10 o'clock and going until 1 o'clock PM is the Way to Go Maryland, I believe it's a college fair, and that's at the University System of Maryland here in downtown. So I would encourage folks to stop by that as well. Also, this Sunday, if you're looking for something to do, the middle and high school art exhibitions and receptions will be at the Museum of Fine Arts, starting at 2 o'clock. 3:30 will be their unveiling. So I encourage everybody to come out to those events, and that's the end of my comments. With that, we will move on to the approval of the minutes.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move for the approval of minutes as presented for the mayor and council meetings held on March 4th, March 11th, March 18th, and March 25th, all of which occurred, of course, in 2014.
Motion was made by Mr. Munson, seconded by Mr. Metzner. Any discussion? All those in favor of approval of the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Minutes are approved. Next up is the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, hereby moved that all the consent agenda be approved as presented. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Metzner and seconded by Mr. Munson. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Last week, we had a discussion about the last item, which is the Wind Down Friday events, and it's, it was stated that it would be open to patrons, the whole street, but on the map, it showed that there are two areas within the block that are going to be fenced off. I'm curious what the fences are for. You see the map on the third page in your consent agenda?
Mm-hmm.
There are two yellow lines which appear to fence off the area. I assume that does not preclude access for the sidewalks, the public at large.
And John chipped in here, it's my understanding that that's, is that the area where there'll be alcohol service within the fence?
There will be a fence there, but it will not preclude people from coming through. It's more to control people leaving.
With alcohol.
So it'll be very clear to people that are simply walking in downtown that they can traverse that area.
Yeah, and that's truly one of their goals, is to make it more of a community event, have people come in, not just in the area of the courtyard or the theater.
So it will, the fence is more to demarcate the boundaries for alcohol consumption, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Does that answer your question? Any other discussion?
Clearly marked.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Consent agenda is approved. First, we have no unfinished business under new business, item A, the introduction of an ordinance to repeal Chapter 70 cable television and open video systems.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for mayor and council introduction of an ordinance to repeal Chapter 70 of the city code entitled cable television and open video systems. Hereafter, cable television and open video systems will be regulated through individual franchise agreements.
Second.
Any discussion? Motion made by Mr. Alshar, seconded by Mr. Metzner. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. And the ordinance is introduced. Item B, the approval of a resolution, a lease amendment for municipal stadium with Hagerstown Baseball LLC.
Mayor, hereby move for approval of a resolution authorizing the execution of a third amendment to the lease from municipal stadium with the Hagerstown Baseball LLC to extend the term of use for the 2015 and 2016 seasons, to provide for an annual rental payment and to relieve the city from certain utility, maintenance, and improvement obligations.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Brubaker, seconded by Mr. Munson. Any discussion?
I would reiterate my opposition to the extension of this amendment to the lease for the 2016 season. We clearly have the ability to do this each year, and extending it through two years precludes us from the opportunity if other opportunities arise for use of the property.
Any other discussion?
I'm also in concurrence with Kristen, and if anybody else is interested, they can review the tape from when it was talked about.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion made by Mr. Brubaker and seconded by Mr. Munson, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no.
No.
The ayes have it, and the lease amendment is approved. Next up is item C, approval of a resolution for residential lease agreement for 38 North Potomac Street, apartment 2.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move that the mayor and city council approve the attached resolution authorizing the execution of a residential lease agreement at the city of Hagerstown property located at 38 North Potomac Street in Hagerstown, Maryland. The lease will be between the city of Hagerstown and Florencio Gonzalez and shall be in effect from June 1, 2014, to May 31, 2015.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Brubaker, seconded by Mr. Metzner. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Ayes have it, resolution is approved. Next up, similar resolution for apartment number 3.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move that the mayor and city council approve the attached resolution authorizing the execution of a residential lease agreement at the city of Hagerstown property located at 38 North Potomac Street in Hagerstown, Maryland. Lease will be between the city of Hagerstown and Geneva Smith and shall be in effect from May 1, 2014 to April 30, 2015.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Metzner, seconded by Mr. Munson. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Ayes have it, the resolution is approved. Another similar resolution for apartment number 4.
Mayor, I hereby move that the mayor and city council approve the attached resolution authorizing the execution of a residential lease agreement at the city of Hagerstown property located at 38 North Potomac Street in Hagerstown, Maryland. The lease will be between the city of Hagerstown and Emily Jones and shall be, shall be in effect from June 1, 2014 to May 31, 2015.
Second.
Mayor, may I, before we vote on this, may I make a, make a comment?
Please.
I'd like to congratulate staff on this. These four leases, these three leases and one previously done are a major step forward in terms of helping develop the arts in downtown Hagerstown and to bring Hagerstown a little bit of income. And this is a very good move, and it's good to see that this is coming to fruition. These folks who are running these apartments will also be helping push the arts in downtown Hagerstown in a major way, and I think that's tremendous.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Motion made by Mr. Munson, seconded by Mr. Metzner. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Resolution is approved. Item F on new business, approval of a resolution, user agreement with Washington County Senior Softball League, Inc.
Mayor, hereby move for the approval of a resolution authorizing the execution of a user agreement with Washington County Senior Softball League Incorporated for the non-exclusive use of the City Park softball fields for the 2014 season.
Second.
Any discussion? Motion made by Mr. Metzner, seconded by Mr. Brubaker. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Ayes have it, and the agreement is approved. Next up, item G, approval of a license agreement with Amanda Miller for the Fishing Lesson Sculpture at City Park.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move for the approval of a license agreement with Amanda Miller, who will author a children's book related to the Fishing Lesson Sculpture in City Park. This agreement set forth the rights and terms of the future use of the book.
I heard a motion by Ms. Nye, seconded by Mr. Metzner. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Ayes have it, and the agreement is approved. Item H, acceptance of a grant Chesapeake and Atlantic Coastal Bay's capital improvement grant for stormwater.
Mayor, hereby move to accept a grant from Chesapeake and Atlantic Coastal Bay's Trust Fund for the design and construction of two stormwater management retrofit projects on city-owned property. The grant amount is $500,000. The city commits to matching the grant with $100,000 in general fund dollars from the Stormwater Implementation Capital Improvements Project, 45-CO-637.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, this is just a tiny forerunner of what will be a large obligation to all the municipalities and counties in Maryland, stormwater implementation regulations, and if we could do this well on all the projects, we'd be in great shape. Thanks to staff for bringing this forward.
Indeed. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion made by Mr. Brubaker and seconded by Mr. Metzner, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Ayes have it, and the grant is approved. Next up, item I, approval of the right-of-way entry agreement for the EPA.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move to grant right-of-way entry authorization to the Environmental Protection Agency and its contractors for the installation and monitoring of dye tracer detectors at various city-owned properties. These detectors will be used as part of the monitoring and remediation efforts at the former central chemical site on Mitchell Avenue.
Second.
Heard Mr. Brubaker, because he was louder on that one, so he gets the second. So on the motion made by Ms. Nye and seconded by Mr. Brubaker, any discussion?
A couple of comments. And the first is to thank the individual from EPA that came and spoke, I forget his name, I guess it was last week. That said, I, while at the end of the day, this may be a good thing, I just do not have great confidence in, number one, the practicality that it has to be done in this manner and cannot be done through some less invasive water monitoring of the few sources, city-owned sources that they cite. And number two, that the Office of Accountability, so to speak, for any issues or fallout associated with this will not rest squarely at our desk. And so I just, there's got to be, to me, a better method than what's proposed.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no.
No.
Motion carries four to one. Next up is item J, the approval of a Sinagro wastewater treatment plant sludge storage tank and sludge thickening project.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move that the mayor and city council approve the funding of the Sinagro wastewater treatment plant sludge storage tank and sludge thickening project. Wastewater CIP 54C 0711 will be utilized to fund the total project amount of $944,750. Additionally, the approval of this motion will serve as a notice to proceed to Sinagro.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Alshar, seconded by Mr. Munson. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next up, item K, the approval of the expansion of police housing incentives.
Mayor, hereby move for mayor and council's approval of the expansion of police housing incentives. This increase would be based on the corresponding Department of Community and Economic Development map, expanding the program to include police officer trainees and would be in addition to any current programs offered by the city. This program will be funded through vacancy savings in the police department budget.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Brubaker, seconded by Mr. Metzner. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next up, item L, approval of an MOU with HPD and the citizens assisting and sheltering the abused, Inc., otherwise known as CASA.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for mayor and council approval to enter into a memorandum of understanding with CASA. The proposed MOU was recommended by the city finance director because we are passing grant money through to CASA. The grant program associated with this MOU is from the Governor's Office of Crime Control Prevention. In this particular grant, each applicant is eligible to receive two grant awards. CASA has already incurred expenses covered by the grant, however, this MOU is needed in order to process their payments to the city's financial system.
Sir, second? Motion made by Mr. Alshar, seconded by Mr. Brubaker. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries, MOU is approved. Next up is item M, approval of rain insurance policy for the 2014 Western Maryland Blues Fest.
I hereby move for the approval to purchase rain insurance policies for the 2014 Western Maryland Blues Fest at the following maximum amounts. A $20,000 policy for Friday, May 30, 2014, from 3:00 PM to 8:00 PM. A $60,000 policy for Saturday, May 31, 2014, from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM. The total cost for the insurance will be $9,660. Funding will be from the Blues Fest budget to the Public Functions account. 5% of the rain insurance proceeds will go to the Maryland Theater for the risk of the beer and wine sales.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Munson and seconded by Ms. Nye. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries. And last but not least, approval of updated guidelines to the city center residency initiative program.
Mayor, hereby move that the mayor and council approve the revised guidelines to Center City Residence Initiative, CCRI program. The revised guidelines include boundary edits for the existing CCRI area, home buyers and renters, as depicted on the attached map, creation of a priority area for CCRI renters, as depicted on the attached map, increasing the rental subsidy to $300 per month for CCRI renters in the priority area, elimination of the two-year residency requirement for CCRI renters, and requiring a one-year residency commitment for all CCRI renters. Funding for the rental subsidy component edits will come from the general fund reserve in the amount of $50,000, as approved in the FY14 budget. The updated guidelines will strengthen the existing program and offer more attractive incentives to encourage CCRI eligible applicants to live in the city center.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Brubaker and seconded by Mr. Munson. Any discussion?
You know, I really, it really gives me some pause to reduce the residency on these very generous subsidies from two years to one year, but I'm going to go along with it because we need to have more success in the program and get more people downtown, so let's see how this works.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Ayes have it, and the motion is approved. We are adjourned. Thank you.